Tonight on CTV News at 6, Forever Canadian hurdles, another obstacle in its anti-Alberta separatist campaign. More than 400,000 signatures verified in support of the group's referendum question.
And now the real question arises, will the premier do the right thing? Or will she do the politically expedient thing?
Tax hike time at City Hall. Councilors consider how much more Edmonton property owners should pay.
Fixing these issues means taking making real decisions about what services you want less of and honest conversations about how you'll fund new services.
And local connections to curling at the upcoming Olympics.
We didn't just build this team to win the Olympic trials. We tried to build this team to win an Olympic gold medal.
A few more mild days and some more snow before the week is done. Breaking news with Jeff Hastings, CTV Edmonton, local breaking news with Jeff Hastings. Good evening. The Forever Canada petition has passed elections Alberta's verification process. The initiative led by former deputy premier Thomas Lukasik is designed to counter Alberta separatist efforts. Brendan Purdy joins us live in studio tonight. And Brendan, what is now verified and what's next?
Well, Jeff Lukasik needed to collect 293,000 signatures in 90 days, a number that he and his group blew out of the water. Forever Canadian officially collected more than 438,000 or an estimated 13.6% of eligible Albertans. The proposal will now be brought to the Legislative Assembly where it will be referred to a committee within 10 days. Now, if it goes to the Lieutenant Governor for a referendum, it must be held before the next provincial election in October of 2027.
And now the real question arises, will the premier do the right thing? Or will she do the politically expedient thing? Our petition did not ask for a referendum. We purposely chose the legislative route, which gives there an opportunity to ask this question in the legislature and have all MLAs vote on it and put this issue to bed once and for all.
Justice Minister Mickey Amerin is congratulating the group for gathering so many signatures. He says caucus and cabinet will now discuss how to proceed under the legislation. Jeff?
All right, thank you Brendan. The Alberta Federation of Labor is clearing the record regarding MLA recall petitions. The premier said on several occasions, the petitions are a distraction and organized by either unions or AFL's leader. After teachers were forced back to work, Gil McGowan had said unions would use recalls to help topple the government.
We discovered quickly that we didn't have to organize any of these campaigns because ordinary Albertans were doing it themselves. So this, and this is the important point, what's happening with recall campaigns around the province is a grassroots brush fire.
CTV News asked if the premier still stands by her comments, unions are behind the recall petitions. A spokesperson for the Minister of Justice responded by saying the provincial government has been clear the recall act should not be weaponized to trigger a new election. There are now 14 approved petitions for UCP MLAs. Budget talks are underway at City Hall and city council says it is focused on ways to reduce the proposed hike. Right now, property taxes could increase close to six and a half percent. Cutting that is a challenging risk in a growing and aging city. Jeremy Thompson has been listening to the discussions all day and is at City Hall with the latest. Jeremy?
Without spending discipline, the problems will compound. And I've already talked about the challenges of delivering services in a high cost environment and the structural budget variances that we've been working to rectify. Fixing these issues means taking making real decisions about what services you want less of and honest conversations about how you'll fund new services.
Now, city bureaucrats say the proposed 6.4% tax increase essentially amounts to treading water, maintaining existing services in the face of rising labor and material costs. That includes the basics like snow clearing, transit, police and fire services, recreation, waste collection, and more. There's a projected surplus for 2025. That $16 million will begin to refill the city's rainy day reserve, which council dipped into last year to minimize the tax pain. Mayor Andrew Nack says refilling that reserve plus accommodating population growth and renewing aging infrastructure has put the city in a financial bind. Still, he says council is looking to maintain or lower next year's tax increase.
At the end of the day, we are looking to protect our core services. We are looking to create financial stability for the city of Edmonton's ongoing operations. There is a cost to doing that as well as keeping up with our rapid population growth.
Now, council is expected to make changes to the budget as the week goes on, but the proposed 6.4% increase, the average homeowner will pay an extra $230 in property taxes next year. Now, this is day one of budget talks. Council is still absorbing information from various budget presentations before councilors propose and debate actual changes. Council did pass the utility budget today and for the second year in a row, the cost to have your garbage and other waste collected is going down. It'll save the average homeowner about $16 next year. Alberta government is pushing back on the federal government's gun buyback program and other federal gun laws. The premier says a motion will be introduced to defy the program in the legislature this week. CTV's Narman Isa has the story.
Tip for lowlife criminals out there. If you don't want to get shot, don't break into someone's house.
The premier has federal gun laws in her crosshairs. Danielle Smith says her government will introduce a motion through its Alberta sovereignty within the United Canada Act.
If passed in the legislature, instruct all provincial entities, including our municipalities and law enforcement agencies, to refuse to enforce or prosecute under the federal gun seizure program.
Ottawa's voluntary gun buyback program for businesses has collected more than 12,000 assault style firearms. Now, a pilot program for individuals has been rolled out in Nova Scotia.
Lawful firearms owners are not the problem within, not just the province of Alberta, but within Canada.
While the premier hinted at instructing those in authority on what to do, the Public Safety Minister is reaying it in.
We do not direct law enforcement. I was there, I know what the premier said, but I have to be clear, we do not direct law enforcement. What we do though is set priorities.
Ella says law abiding gun owners who want to protect their property should not be targeted, something the president of the Alberta Association of Chiefs of Police agrees with.
We're not interested in utilizing the limited police resources we have on a gun buyback program.
One political science professor says there are many legal questions on what the premier is proposing.
What about a police officer who ignores that and charges someone? Do they get fired? What about a crown prosecutor who lays charges? Do they get fired? We don't know where this will go.
The province is expected to release more details on Tuesday. Narman Isa, CTV News, Edmonton.
Amendment responded in a statement late this afternoon. Public Safety Canada says, quote, "Should provincial laws put in place by the Alberta government impede or limit the collection process for compensation in the ASFCP? Those who participated in the declaration would not be directed to the next step of submitting a claim and scheduling an appointment. They would have to export, deactivate, or turn prohibited weapons into police without compensation before the end of the amnesty periods or risk criminal liability, including for illegal possession." A new commission that will oversee complaints made against police is now fully operational. Gates Guerin reports.
The province calls it a new era in police oversight.
By creating this independent civilian-led body, we're setting a new standard, one that puts fairness and integrity at the heart of the law enforcement in Alberta.
Complaints against police filed by Albertans will now be received and investigated by the new police review commission. These complaints can range from noncriminal misconduct to cases involving serious injury or death.
With this new model, Albertans can be confident investigations will be handled fairly and impartially.
Investigations were previously handled by individual police agencies, which according to one retired police inspector, caused a rift in public perception.
And I think that's the goal is to try to expand on or have at least significantly more police legitimacy and the police not investigating the police.
Dan Jones says calls for more civilian oversight and transparency have been made for quite some time and a civilian-led commission should help that, but he has questions about who will be a part of it.
Who are they? Are they former police officers that served in the agencies in which they are investigating? And then is that actually changing anything? And I think that's where the public will be like, well, you're not actually changing it, you're just changing the name of it.
The commission emphasizes independence, but believes experience is crucial.
You can rely upon their investigative expertise, but at that same time, make sure that we're truly not having police ultimately investigating police and making the final conclusions.
The commission is mandated to finish investigations within 180 days. Complaints can now be filed on the commission's website. Gates Guerin, CTV News, Edmonton.
A jury trial started today for a Beaumont man accused of killing his girlfriend. She disappeared in July 2023 and her body was found 10 days later. Amanda Anderson has the latest from law courts in Wetaskwin.
A second floor courtroom was packed first thing this morning as a jury was selected for a second degree murder trial. The process took about an hour. Kenneth Skelly is accused of killing his girlfriend Teresa Oberly. The 40-year-old mother disappeared from Beaumont in July of 2023. Her body was found near White Court 10 days later. Seven men and five women were selected for the jury. They made a brief appearance in the courtroom to be told the trial will officially start tomorrow. Kenneth's trial is scheduled for two weeks. Amanda Anderson, CTV News, Wetaskwin.
HIV Edmonton and local community groups are marking World AIDS Day with a call to action.
We want people to come out, to learn more, to get tested, to know their status, and to also end the stigma, to see people and not the virus.
HIV Edmonton hosted an open house with free testing today. New data released by the Public Health Agency of Canada shows in 2024, there were 1,826 new HIV diagnoses excluding Quebec. That marks a small decline in the national rate. Ottawa says the virus still remains a concern in Canada with disproportionate impacts felt among populations experiencing health and social inequities. The Edmonton Oilers have returned from the road and are set to start a lengthy home stand. The team defeated Seattle Saturday night, riding the return of forward Ryan Nugent-Hopkins to victory. Oilers have been criticized for playing with low energy in recent losses. Today, head coach Chris Knoblock spoke about the difference in the team's play against the Kraken.
I also like our players' engagement. They were a little bit fired up and, you know, we took some more penalties than we would like to, but there was a lot of energy and a lot of togetherness on the bench and on the ice, which I think is very important to play an entire season in.
Oilers host the Minnesota Wild tomorrow night. White House is all lit up for the holidays.
I hope they learn a little more about the district, feel a little more comfortable in their community and have a little fun because it's always lovely to get out in the middle of winter.
The Strathcona Business Association flipped the switch Saturday evening. Among the twinkling lights were street performances and a winter clothing drive for the mustard seat. Live music was emceed by Mrs. Claus and The Grinch. This year also featured cultural teachings from the Ben Taro Traditional Healing Society. And a happy meteorological winter to you, Josh.
Yeah, thank you. Us meteorologists like to consider December, January, February as our winter months because it makes more sense than waiting until December 21st for the start of winter. Didn't feel all that wintry out there today. The colder air started to retreat through the day tomorrow. We got to minus, or through the day yesterday, we got to minus four yesterday. Today, we're at two degrees in Edmonton. That's the daytime high. Look northwest of the city, Vilnav Airport is at four degrees right now. We'll see temperatures, I think, hold pretty steady here, a degree or two above zero for the next three or four hours and then through the course of the day tomorrow, we'll start to cool off. Minus 11 for a morning low today. That's right on par with average, but that high of two puts us five degrees warmer than average for December 1st. Had some wet snow, then some rain, even some freezing rain in parts of the Edmonton area. We had some freezing rain to the south, the Red Deer region, and through parts of east central Alberta. It's all now snow in northeastern Alberta. Probably going to pick up several centimeters worth there between Fort McMurray and the Lacklumish Cold Lake regions, but for Edmonton, just cloudy skies for the next few hours to go along with those mild temperatures. I think after midnight and into the early morning hours of tomorrow, we might see a little more snow roll through, anywhere between a dusting and maybe a centimeter or two. That could make the morning commute a little tricky. So will the fact that temperatures are going to drop below zero. So everything that was wet and sloppy this afternoon out on roadways turns icy through the day tomorrow as temperatures fall to about minus six by mid to late afternoon. Another warm-up for Wednesday, Thursday, though. We'll show you that later in the newscast.
All right, thank you, Josh. Still ahead, a change of heart.
If we can agree that the oil tanker ban is going to stay in place, then let's have those conversations.
Next steps to make a pipeline project a reality also ahead. Separatist sentiment soars amongst UCP members despite the premier's recent deal with Ottawa.
Programming brought to you by James H. Brown Injury Lawyers, the heavy hitters of injury law.
BC's premier has had a change of heart over his objection to an Alberta pipeline going through his province, but it comes with a caveat. Alberta Premier Danielle Smith believes a pipeline agreement can happen. CTV's Tyson Fedor reports.
We just want pipelines to be boring again, to quote our prime minister. That was a bit of a joke.
Speaking to hundreds of Canadian energy sector workers, premier Danielle Smith says the future is bright for oil and gas.
In 2025, we created over 80,000 jobs. And so when we start thinking about growing this industry again, when we start thinking about removing the barriers for increase in production, getting access to broader markets, that means we're going to be putting more people to work.
This comes on the heels of last week's memorandum of understanding between Ottawa and Alberta. A bitumen pipeline project has faced staunch criticism from BC's premier and Coastal First Nations, but speaking with CTV's Question Period, premier David Eby says he's willing to discuss a new pipeline.
If we can agree that the oil tanker ban is going to stay in place, then let's have those conversations. I think that would make life a lot better and easier in British Columbia in terms of our relationship with Coastal First Nations.
We want to get as much buy-in and we want to have as much benefit for British Colombians as we possibly can, and that includes British Columbia First Nations.
But with concerns around oil spills in the Heckett Strait, would a pipeline be beneficial elsewhere? One former pipeline executive believes so.
The market should decide where that pipeline ends up. Like, is it Kitimat? Is it Prince Rupert? Is it Vancouver? Do we go back to Vancouver and build another pipe, you know, along the existing Trans Mountain route, which is always an alternative?
But the feds say any interprovincial pipeline needs the consent of all those involved.
If the provinces and the indigenous peoples are in agreement, that then there is a pathway to actually make that happen, but I am not for a pipeline.
Alberta has until July 1st to submit a pipeline proposal to Ottawa's major projects office. Tyson Fedor, CTV News, Calgary.
Members of the United Conservative Party had a chance to digest Alberta's new deal with Ottawa for a potential pipeline. The premier says this puts the province in a better position in the country. Some party members at the annual general meeting are still pushing separatist sentiment. CTV's Connor Hogg has more.
Despite Danielle Smith's deal with Ottawa, many members of her United Conservative Party are still hesitant to trust the federal government.
And if we were already an independent country as an example, I think we would be further ahead than waiting for Ottawa in 2040.
We gotta, we gotta look at saving Alberta and doing what we have to do to save it.
The question of independence is looming large over this UCP AGM. This document is being passed around by candidates to the UCP board, showing a clear line between those who are pro-party establishment and those who are pro-independence. Separatist sentiment not having gone away even after Smith's deal with Ottawa.
I know that there is a lot of frustration on the part of Albertans and that's been expressed at our AGMs, but I also said that the way to solve these kinds of issues where you've got polar opposite views is through things like citizen initiated referenda.
A difference of opinion remains fundamental to the party, says those we spoke to.
I think there's always questions within a healthy party on the different directions that we can go and such questions are good for the party.
There's going to be times where not everyone's going to be happy, but we're going to move forward.
I think it's a healthy outpouring and it will just make the premier stronger in her mandate going forward.
Party constituents voted on 36 policy resolutions. There was a mixed reception to a resolution on expanding Albertans' right to defend themselves and their property, but strong support for resolutions calling for the removal of fluoride from community water and ending public funding for third trimester abortions. As well, several environmental proposals that contradict the federal MOU found some support. Connor Hogg, CTV News, Edmonton.
Coming up, curling for Canada.
We didn't just build this team to win the Olympic trials. We tried to build this team to win an Olympic gold medal.
Local athletes will compete to the upcoming Olympics in Italy.
Temperatures tumbling tomorrow will start off just below zero and end the day a handful of degrees below the freezing mark, but another warm-up rolls back in for Wednesday, Thursday. Those details right after the break.
Programming brought to you by Century Casino, three great locations, Edmonton, St. Albert, and Century Mile. Programming brought to you by a very merry pops with your Edmonton Symphony Orchestra. Learn more at windspearcenter.com.
It was an exciting weekend for curling fans as the Canadian Olympic curling trials came to an end. The teams of Brad Jacobs and Rachel Holman will represent Team Canada at the Olympics in February. CTV's Merrick De Cash spoke with a member of Team Jacobs who calls St. Albert home.
Another trophy on the shelf for Mark Kennedy. The St. Albert native is fresh off helping Team Jacobs clinch a spot at the Winter Olympics in February.
We didn't just build this team to win the Olympic trials. We tried to build this team to win an Olympic gold medal. So this was another step in that direction and we'll, we'll try to play that well when we get to Cortina and try to bring it home.
Kennedy calls the St. Albert Curling Club home.
So exciting to have him come out of the St. Albert Curling Club as a junior, as an ambassador for our club as he competes internationally.
This will be Kennedy's fourth time wearing the maple leaf at the Winter Olympics. Brian Koops has watched every one of Kennedy's Olympic appearances. He joined the club back in 1968.
To have the privilege of watching him grow up, he was in our Little Rock program here. He was on my high school team and then he played with his dad and we played against him for years with his dad and then they got his dad to coach full-time.
Kennedy continues to help out the juniors at the St. Albert Curling Club.
Teaches them how to sweep, talks about how to manage rocks, spends time with all of them, learns their names. He's really fantastic at just being very approachable.
Kennedy has two months to prepare for the games where he hopes to add another medal to his trophy case. Merrick De Cash, CTV News, St. Albert.
All right, interesting day weather-wise. There was the rain.
Yep.
There was some snow.
The snow didn't amount to much and neither did the rain really because of how warm it was out there. I think sidewalks, side streets, parking lots overnight tonight, early tomorrow morning, those lesser trafficked areas, you're going to see some really slick conditions and then through the course of the day tomorrow, temperatures drop. Everything's going to start to ice over a little bit. There's the Action Furnace Revive Sky Camp, Action Furnace Fixed Rider is free. We're under cloudy skies. Look at this, temperatures still two degrees above zero. Two is the daytime high for today. Grand Prairie hit five, whereas you were in the minus seven, minus eight range in northeastern Alberta. Red Deer just slightly above the freezing mark this afternoon. All the snow, and it's all snow as opposed to rain or freezing rain, is now off in northeastern Alberta. You get a low pressure system that's the first of a series of low pressure systems that'll make their way across the province through the course of this week. Out ahead of it and to the south of it, you had that kick of some warmer air. Now, Fort McMurray Cold Lake, we're on the cooler side of things and dealing with that snow, which will continue through at least the next few hours and then start to drop south as this trailing cold front moves through. So some more snow here, back further to the west and northwest. Chances of some snow in through the Edmonton area, probably after midnight into the early morning hours of tomorrow. So that could make the morning commute a little interesting. Doesn't look like really heavy snow, but some fresh precipitation somewhere in the early morning hours. And then you see this cooler flow. There's the Arctic High Pressure System that'll drop in and that's what will cause temperatures to fall through the day tomorrow. The real cold air though stays off to the east and northeast of the Edmonton region. So it's sort of a glancing blow for us. And western Alberta, wow, you won't notice much change at all. Temperatures are still going to be on the mild side in areas like Jasper and Hinton, although you may see some more snow late in the day tomorrow. Watch the next low pressure system come through. That as well will kick in some milder air. So after things cool off tomorrow, the next low draws back in the warm air and we're right back to around or slightly above zero for Wednesday and Thursday. Could see some more snow though, late in the day Wednesday and then Thursday and Friday both have a chance of some snow. So a fairly mild week, even minus six tomorrow afternoon is not all that bad, but almost every day, as we talked about last week, has at least a chance of some snow. Minus nine in Fort McMurray right now, still four degrees in Grand Prairie, two and one in Edmonton, a Red Deer Lloydminster at minus three. Temperatures for almost everybody will be falling through tomorrow and that's the case here in the city as well. Around the freezing mark overnight, chance of snow through the early morning hours and then minus four by lunchtime and somewhere in the minus eight range 24 hours from now. Tomorrow is Giving Tuesday and here's your chance to give to CTV's Toy Mountain and potentially get something back. We'll be at Trail Appliances South from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM tomorrow. Come by, bring a new unwrapped toy or cash donation for CTV's Toy Mountain and you could win that whirlpool stackable washer and dryer. This is all in support of BGC Big Brother's Big Sisters of Edmonton area. Minus six by tomorrow afternoon, back to zero and plus two for Wednesday, Thursday, and then cold again, but probably only for a day or two. Minus 12, minus 14 Friday, Saturday, but as we come out of next weekend, just like this weekend, things start to warm up once again.
All right, thanks, Josh. The streets of Fort Edmonton Park have transformed into a winter wonderland. The annual Christmas market and festival has taken over eight acres of the park. There are more than 150 vendors indoors and experiences for the whole family outside. Kids can explore ice sculptures and take a ride on the carousel or vintage sleigh. There are also live theater shows and a concert series.
Bringing vendors and customers together as close to the holiday season as possible to make sure you can shop consciously and shop local during the holidays is really why we're going till December 21st this year. We're going till December 21st, so as close to the holidays as we can get it.
Market will be welcoming shoppers Thursdays through Sundays leading up to Christmas. You can buy tickets at the gate or online at yegxmasmarket.com. Still ahead on CTV News at 6, a familiar face returns to the federal cabinet.
It's nice to get the opportunity to keep on doing some amazing work and contributing to Canada, like for the reasons that I got into politics, because I love my country.
Mark Carney shuffles his ministerial deck and...
They proceeded for at least 15 minutes to attack and beat us brutally.
A Canadian claims to be the victim of Israeli settler violence in the Middle East. Stay with us.
Programming brought to you by James H. Brown Injury Lawyers, the heavy hitters of injury law. Today at ctvedmitton.ca.
Prime Minister Mark Carney is bringing a familiar face back to cabinet. A small shuffle after Stephen Gilbo resigned last week over a disagreement on climate policy. CTV's Judy Trent reports.
The prime minister has decided to divide Stephen Gilbo's previous responsibilities between three ministers. The biggest surprise was the return of a new old face. Mark Miller is returning to the inner circle after being dropped from cabinet after Mark Carney's election. Miller was a loyal supporter of Justin Trudeau, but has now been appointed Minister of Canadian Culture and Identity as well as the minister responsible for official languages.
It feels great. I am a guy that likes to be busy and so, you know, I was a little restless, but it's nice to get the opportunity to keep on doing some amazing work and contributing to Canada like for the reasons that I got into politics, because I love my country.
Current Minister for Transformation of the Public Service and Procurement, Joelle Lightbound, takes on the additional role of Quebec Lieutenant. Here's what he said after he was sworn in.
I'll just say that I'm honored by the trust bestowed on me by the prime minister. It's an important role in federal politics and in Quebec politics and I look forward to getting to it.
Also, the current Minister of the Environment and Climate Change, Julie De Bruysen, takes on the additional role of Minister for Nature. She takes on responsibility for national parks. All three ministers involved in this shuffle were first elected in 2015. Judy Trent, CTV News, Ottawa.
A Canadian citizen is one of four international activists recovering from injuries after they were assaulted allegedly by Israeli settlers in the West Bank. CTV's Colton Prail reports.
A Canadian woman and three Italians were attacked in the early morning hours Sunday in the village of Enel Duke near Jericho in the West Bank. The woman from British Columbia who asked not to be identified says masked settlers armed with rifles and clubs beat her and her companions in an attempt to intimidate them.
They proceeded for at least 15 minutes to attack and beat us brutally. I myself was kicked repeatedly in the head, in the ribs, in the hip, and in the thigh. They poured gasoline on us and threatened to burn the house down.
In the past month...
The woman is part of a Palestinian group which places international activists in the West Bank to try to deter settler violence. She says attacks in the Duke region have become a daily occurrence over the past two months. In a statement, Global Affairs Canada says it's aware of a Canadian citizen injured in the West Bank, but can't provide further information. Canada condemned violence committed by what it calls extremist settlers. Canada condemned violence committed by what it calls extremist settlers and opposes any actions or talk about the annexation of the Palestinian territories, calling the settlements illegal. Meanwhile, the United Nations says there were over 260 settler attacks across the West Bank in October, the most in any month since 2006. Meanwhile, the Canadian woman says she and her colleagues will return to the community of Duke where they were attacked once they recover from their injuries.
What happened to us is terrible, but it's nothing in comparison to the Palestinian experience.
Last week, Germany, France, the U K and Italy said the increased attacks risk undermining the success of a Gaza peace plan. They're urging the Israeli government to reverse its settlement policy. Colton Prell, C T V News, Ottawa.
Ukrainian President Volodymyr Zelensky met with French President Emmanuel Macron today after talks with the U S this weekend about revising the potential peace plan with Russia. Both leaders insisted no decisions can be made without Ukraine and Europe at the table. Zelensky added that Russia should not be rewarded for starting the war. The meeting comes as the U S has sent an envoy to Moscow for a meeting with Vladimir Putin tomorrow. Authorities in Hong Kong have now arrested 14 people in connection with the city's deadliest fire in decades, a fire that has killed at least 151 people. More than 40 people are still missing. Officials now point to substandard renovation materials for the devastation, specifically tests of green mesh that was wrapped around bamboo scaffolding revealed it did not meet fire retardant standards. Foam insulation used by contractors also helped fan the flames of the inferno. More than 350 people are reported dead in Sri Lanka after a cyclone brought devastating flooding to the country. This aerial footage shows the scope of the flooding in Sri Lanka, which has displaced more than 200,000 people. The extreme weather destroyed bridges, triggered landslides and covered roads. Over 1,000 people are missing in not only Sri Lanka, but Indonesia and Thailand as well. Your passport must be kept in excellent condition when you're traveling. A woman learned that the hard way after she was refused entry to Costa Rica and detained due to her passport being damaged. C T V's Pat Foreign reports.
I think we caught somebody at the, at the table that had a bad day and wanted to prove something.
Andy Field and Jason Tate of Georgetown went to Costa Rica in mid-November to celebrate an anniversary. Field says her puppy chewed the corner of her passport, but that she's used it to travel to other countries without issue.
It's barely like this much off the corner of it. I tried to take it to Service Canada and they actually told me it wasn't damaged enough to be replaced. So I've had it for five years. We've traveled to seven different countries with it.
But when she landed at the Liberia Airport in Costa Rica, a staff member said her passport was too damaged to enter the country. She was held in detention for 24 hours and told she would have to fly home.
He was allowed in the country. I was not. So he was actually escorted to the exit and told to figure it out. And I was taken into a detention cell.
Tate says they tried to stay positive, but the situation escalated quickly.
They brickwalled us every single time we tried to talk to them or communicate with them.
He ended up staying in a nearby hotel. The couple bought return tickets to Toronto, but then were not allowed to board the plane. They had to buy two more tickets the next day.
They processed me like a criminal. Like they took all of my information. They asked for my saliva.
Rips, tears, water damage, those are all typical things that technically you're not supposed to have. I mean, you might get lucky and someone might not question you, but the problem is you might get unlucky and someone will.
Travel expert Lauren Christie says it's better to be safe than sorry and always replace a damaged passport.
And don't check it the day of, check it a couple, couple of weeks ahead of time. So you have a chance to rectify the situation if you need to.
The couple planned to spend about $2,000, but had to pay about $8,000 for the last minute flights and other expenses. Field plans to get a new passport, but won't be heading back to Costa Rica.
I feel like I've been stripped of like all of my security and confidence to travel and now I have zero confidence in traveling anywhere.
Pat Foreign, C T V News.
Still ahead, taking stock of holiday spending habits.
Being a bit patriotic about, you know, how they want to spend their money over the holiday season.
What Cyber Monday means for spending and buying Canadian also ahead.
The Alberta Sports Hall of Fame is actually a registered charity.
A plea for generosity ahead of Giving Tuesday. And there's a live look in West Edmonton from the C T V drone. West Edmonton Mall hosting one of many spectacular Christmas light displays in the city. Nice weather to get out and enjoy it, but a cooldown is on the way. Stay with us.
Programming brought to you by Century Casino, three great locations, Edmonton, St. Albert, and Century Mile.
Checking on the markets, the Canadian dollar flows near 71 cents U.S. Oil was up 77 cents, closing the day at $59.32 U.S. a barrel. Gold gained nearly $20. The TSX and Dow Jones both down 281 points and 427. If you somehow missed the marketing, today is what online retailers call Cyber Monday, another day after Black Friday filled with deals. With the ballooning cost of living and tariffs, some are keeping a tight budget and what little spending they do is here in Canada. C T V's Adrian Gopriel reports.
December has arrived and with it, a flurry of Canadian consumers.
I'm sticking to a budget, trying to get really good deals. Yeah.
A survey by the Bank of Montreal has found that three in five Canadians are adjusting their holiday spending amid tariff concerns, with 37% focusing on made in Canada gifts.
Being a bit patriotic about, you know, how they want to spend their money over the holiday season to sort of give back into the Canadian economy.
The economic headwinds from inflation to debt levels are causing some to keep a tighter grip on their wallets. What consumers are saying the top of the list is to save money this holiday season. And so if you're going to be marketing online for Cyber Monday, I suspect you're going to be bringing out your best deals. And cost-conscious Canadians are shifting purchase priorities. This survey by the Business Development Bank of Canada says the average household is spending just over $940 this year. More than half of that is expected to go towards Canadian products, contributing to $11 billion to Canada's GDP while supporting thousands of jobs.
Canadians are really being mindful of how they're going to spend their money over the holidays and where they want to put their money. And I think for a large chunk, it still is going to be around supporting, you know, Canadian businesses. Financial experts say taking the time to map out your shopping list as well as planning your purchases in advance are key to keeping a cap on your budget. Try and avoid those impulse buys and last minute shopping. The calendar has now turned to December and for those celebrating, the clock is officially ticking to get your gifts.
Tomorrow is Giving Tuesday and organizations across Alberta are asking for support. Giving Tuesday is a global day of generosity that happens after Black Friday and Cyber Monday. Alberta Sports Hall of Fame is asking for donations so it can continue to preserve sport history, inspire future athletes and keep its programs accessible.
I don't think a lot of people necessarily realize that the Alberta Sports Hall of Fame is actually a registered charity. And so that means we need donations throughout the year to keep us afloat.
Officials say the donations will help the Hall of Fame expand its outreach program where staff visit local schools and educate kids on different sports. A load that takes up the entire width of the highway is now out of Edmonton and will continue its journey to the Fort Saskatchewan area tomorrow. The 870,000 kilogram caustic wash tower is currently parked on the side of Highway 14 near Highway 21. Its journey to the Dow Chemical site will continue tomorrow morning starting at 7:00. The province says it will go a maximum 30 kilometers an hour and occasionally travel against the flow of traffic, so lanes will be blocked off. The city is reminding transit users when 2025 ends, so does the use of paper tickets. Tickets with an expiry date of December 31st, 2023 and family or day passes with a 2024 expiration date will no longer be accepted. Transit riders can pay with ARC cards, ARC tickets or cash. Starting January, the orange paper ticket validators will be removed from L R T stops. They'll be replaced with additional ARC validators. The city says it will take about two months to remove all of the old validators. Still ahead, flaming flyby.
With the commercialization of space, we see more strange features in the sky.
The likely cause of this spectacle in the sky. Stay with us.
We've got another great night of entertainment coming up right here on C T V.
Tuesday in your morning, we begin a day of giving and you can take part by helping us build our Toy Mountain. Plus, we're counting down the best songs of the holidays. Have your say on the text line. We'll see you tomorrow.
Your Morning Edmonton, weekdays.
Programming brought to you by Southview Acura. Experience the elegance of the all-new Acura A D X.
Some in southern Alberta got a glimpse of a bright object streaking across the sky last night. C T V's Tyler Barrow finds out what it was.
This video was captured just east of Drumheller. At the same time, it captivated people's attention at the Calgary Zoo.
I don't know, a fireball.
For those who were lucky enough to look up at just the right time, that memory is unforgettable. Joseph Madamitzia captured this video shortly after 5:30 at the Spruce Meadows Christmas Market.
It was really cool. A lot of people in the crowd in the Christmas market were looking up and they were really interested.
Otah Morali saw it from his home. One of his security cameras also caught it.
Magnificent. It was beautiful, actually.
The Facebook group Alberta Aurora Chasers says the fireball was actually visible from across the province with reports coming in from Wainwright, Edmonton, La Combe, Red Deer, Airdrie, Okato, Southbridge and Pintra Creek. A University of Calgary Aurora camera caught it in Lucky Lake, Saskatchewan, approximately 145 kilometers south of Saskatoon. But what was it? According to a U F C astronomy professor, he believes it's a piece of space equipment that was scheduled to re-enter the atmosphere around December 1st. This would be from a rocket that launched on November 5th in New Zealand.
With the commercialization of space, we see more strange features in the sky related to launches and of course to basically materials that's come down.
It was kind of a very, very cool way to cap, you know, the, the beginning of the Christmas season.
Very few surprises in life and I think it was just kind of a nice, something different to kind of capture people's attentions away from day-to-day life or politics or whatever it is.
Tyler Barrow, C T V News, Calgary.
You know who made that story better?
What?
Tyler had put "Fireball" by Pitbull as the soundtrack underneath it. Hey, wouldn't that have been great? Oh, would have been amazing.
I, I don't know that song, Josh.
I'll sing it for you later.
No, now.
Tickle the guts, your forecast. Temperatures right now are at two degrees, will drop to minus two by tomorrow morning, minus six tomorrow afternoon. Oh, I'm going to hear that song in my head all night tonight. Chances of some snow after midnight and into early tomorrow morning. Doesn't look like it'll amount to all that much, but there might be a dusting, maybe a centimeter of fresh snow on the ground. Things are going to freeze over as well through the course of the day as temperatures fall after a really sloppy day today. Sloppy again Wednesday, Thursday as temperatures rebound back to zero and plus two and then minus 12 and minus 14 Friday, Saturday. But in a repeat of what we saw last Friday, Saturday and then yesterday and today, warms back up again Sunday, Monday. So short lived.
Sounds great. Thanks, Josh, and thanks for sharing. Thanks for sharing your time with us, everyone. Have a great night.
See ya.